Good morning. I want to call the September 22nd meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission, meeting to order. If everyone would stand with us, please. Commissioner Chip Finion will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Chip?
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day and for your love for us and just for allowing us to come and to be a part of this great world that you've given us. Father, we pray today as we go about the business of the county, Father, that you would give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that we need to make the best decisions, Father. We ask you to be with those today that are hurting and suffering today, Father. We ask you just to meet their needs when only you can. We ask you to continue to pray for our nation, leaders of our nation, leaders of our state, leaders of our county, our cities, Father, that you would just give them the wisdom they need in all that they do this day. Father, we love you and we thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America- And to the republic where wisdom stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Call the roll, please, Gal.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush. Craig Lynch.
Here.
Chip Finion.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Steve Sandlin.
Here.
Mike Watt. Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you, Gal. Approval of the minutes for our August 25th meeting. I'll call on our vice chair, Craig Lynch.
Mr. Chairman, I do so make a motion to approve the August 25th minutes.
Thank you. Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. This time we'll deviate a little bit from our agenda and there's a couple of things going on. I believe this is Eric's last meeting, but before we get to all of his speeches and crying and all that kind of stuff, we have a new member we would like to welcome, Charlotte P. This is her first meeting and welcome to the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission and why don't you say a few words, if you would, please.
I'm here to learn, anxious to get involved with the county and its growth, and I appreciate the nomination and thank you for having me.
Welcome aboard. Eric, you had a little going away, I think, last Thursday afternoon, but I think tomorrow's officially your last day. Is that correct?
Right.
Why don't you, don't get all slobbery and crying and all that kind of stuff.
I think I did all that last week.
If you would, why don't you just kind of explain to everybody what's happening, what's going on in your life?
I am, tomorrow will be my last day after ten and a half years with Rutherford County and moving back home to Lardell County, Alabama. I'm a county engineer down there, so excited to move home. Hard to leave, love it here. Married a fine woman here and started a family, so this will always be my home away from home. But I thank all you guys, especially the ones I've been around for almost this eleven years, and it's been a great place to start a career and a family and I'll be seeing you guys around for sure. But I thank you guys for all this time I've spent with you.
Eric has only been in this job for a year and a half, something like that, Eric, and has taken it to a level that will be kind of hard to follow up on and you'll be hard to replace, Eric, but home has really strong ties and we understand and wish you well, really do. Okay. Item number five, withdrawn or deferred. It looks like items eight F and nine B have been withdrawn and they won't be discussed today. Is that all?
Yes, sir. That's true.
Okay. Item six, waiver request. Item A, Jamie Hayer for Fred Farah Properties is requesting waivers to the off-site soil provision and the subdivision regulations for property located along Jake's Road. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Jake's Road. You'll see a copy of the map of the area on your screen. Essentially what he's wanting to do is really re-subdivide this lot, not necessarily create a new lot, but take some of this existing property here and combine it with the property to the south. The issue that he's having when he does that is by doing that, he's going to be putting the secondary soil site for the existing lot here, as well as a portion of the primary on this property. So all he's asking for is just permission to have the off-site soil easements between the two lots before he does the plat. Of course, if he does the plat, you'll probably see that again here in the near future, whenever they get around to doing that, but that's really what his request is and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
This really isn't that big of a variance from what we've done in the past.
No, sir.
I remember doing this several times. It'll all be recorded and everything.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
If it's appropriate time, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Submitted for preliminary plan approval. Item seven A, Lewis Downs, section two. The item number is fourteen dash one zero zero eight. Nineteen lots on eight point eight acres, zoned residential medium density, located to the north of Rock Springs Midland Road. Stewart Springs LLC is the applicant. Includes a waiver request to the fire hydrant requirements. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located on the north side of Rock Springs Midland Road, part of the Lewis Downs subdivision. Phase one, section one, phase one was recorded back in July of 2007. Phase two was recorded in August of 2010. Staff has been made aware that only domestic water will be provided for this section of Lewis Downs. Because of this, they are asking for a waiver to the fire hydrant requirement, which will trigger the residential sprinkler requirements just because of the number of lots in the subdivision. There's also a stormwater lot that's part of this section that does require a lot number that's been taken care of. We do expect, I don't know if Eric, if you've got any additional comments on this, but from a planning standpoint, they've met our comments, so I'll just turn it over to Mr. Hill for any other comments you may have.
As the preliminary goes, there's no issues from the engineering side. I just kind of want to give you guys an update. We've already been, went through the construction drawings with this and worked with the engineer, spent some time on it. That pond that's to the southwest of your screen there, there you go. It's, as you can see, it's kind of a way and like Doug said, that'll have to be a lot. It's really flat to get there. The drainage is pretty poor in the back of this area. We've known that. That's no surprise. That was, we knew that when the original design came in and this complies with all that. But we're working with the engineer to get all the final details worked out on getting that water from this section to that pond. It's pretty flat to get there and so Ms. P., our stormwater engineer, is very aware of that and we've been prepping for my departure, so there will be no surprises on this. Everybody knows what's going on. So just to let you guys know kind of what's going on behind the scenes of the construction drawings from this.
Talk to me a little bit about the fire hydrant waiver then, request. I mean, it seemed like we're just getting through this and then we've got a fire hydrant waiver.
Well, yeah, and Ms. Wood from Consolidated Utilities is present. She may want to interject some comments, but when section one and the first phases were submitted, they have domestic and fire protection. As this goes a little further back, the calculations show that domestic water is fine, but they're not going to be able to provide adequate, I don't know if it's pressure or volume, again, she could speak more clearly to that, but they're not going to be able to provide what's necessary for the fire protection for the hydrants. So that's why they're asking for the ability to have the sprinkler systems on the lots as opposed to having the hydrants on the property or on the subdivision.
So we're still going to see it as a fire hydrant waiver when they're going to do the sprinkler system?
Yes, sir.
So they're okay with that?
Yes, sir. Yeah, the way that the, if you recall, the way when we did the subdivision regulations, we had to take that portion out because it was a requirement, well, sprinkler requirement and that had to go in front of the full county commission. So while it's not necessarily in the regs, that's a standalone ordinance or resolution really at that point. So in order for that to kick in, the fire hydrant waiver has to be requested first and then that's when the sprinkler requirement for a subdivision like this, that's when it takes effect.
So then is the waiver conditioned upon the sprinkler going in?
Well, basically, that's one of the requirements, is that if they have to ask for the waiver and upon granting the waiver, that becomes part of what they have to do. So it's all kind of part and parcel with it.
So they won't be going to the commission then with a request to not have-
No, no, sir. It's all, we can take care of it at this level.
Okay.
Eric, with you leaving, are all these in a transition where you've got, where they can go forward until a new engineer comes?
The good thing is, we deal with mostly two firms and so we, which we have great relationships with and so we've been talking for weeks with those guys about all these projects that are on the table and we've got everything cleaned up and so everything that's, any questions that are out there now, I feel like we've got all that taken care of and so.
I'm sorry.
And I've still offered to be available for the next couple of weeks if they need to call, we need to talk something out.
He promised I'd change his phone number.
I think they've got phones in Alabama now.
I do now? I'll be. I'll take up there.
Doug and Eric, this is a preliminary plan, so in the final plan, the fire protection would be spelled out in detail, correct?
That's correct.
Could I ask her a question real quick, though? On part of this subdivision, you've got fire hydrants though, right? And I'm just wondering, this last section and could, is this going to be the last, I guess, section? There's not enough pressure, I guess, to, I'm sure you got, anyway, what we got there? What's the problem over there?
Morning Commissioner Jennifer Wood from Consolidated Utilities District. This is the area where we have a volume issue. It actually went in front of our Board of Commissioners. We talked about this area as a whole. It's in our fosterable zone, so this has come up several times, either subdivisions or just water requests in this area. We have, they have elected and voted to do something in this area. We're actually going to put another tank in this area to help with some volume issues that we do have, but at this time, there's no additional capacity out there for fire protection. So that's kind of where we stand. Some of the sections that came before this, the first section of Lewis Downs, at that time, it was, I guess, not an issue there. I wasn't around then for section one, but now, anything that's coming in that zone, we actually don't have enough capacity to not negatively affect the customers that we already have in that zone, so we're not approving any additional fire protection in the form of fire hydrants there because it does bring the pressure down below 20 PSI, therefore negatively affects the people in that area. So we're hoping that that construction will be completed in a year and a half or so, kind of pending getting land acquired for a tank and we're actually tying some lines together out there as well. So that's still pending, but it has been approved, so.
So have you had any problems with these first one? I don't even know where it's built out yet.
So that first section there, there are some fire hydrants and they have had to be throttled as we've increased demand out there domestic wise. If we turn a hydrant on there, it does negatively affect, so we've had to go back through that zone and we've actually had to throttle some of those hydrants so that when they are turned on, that they don't bring the pressure down in some of the higher elevations in some of the areas in that zone. So, yeah, those hydrants that were put in actually have had to be throttled, which is another reason why we're not approving any additional fire protection there.
I see.
Throttle back how much? Totally cut off or?
Nope, they're not totally cut off.
Different color cap on them?
They're red. Mm-hmm. We had to go back through and throw all those hydrants and there are red tops out there, so 500 or less GPM, so there's still fire protection there. It's just, and we do flushing and we make sure that those hydrants are in working order. So they're still working, but they've had to be throttled back so that we don't bring the pressure down in other areas of that particular, excuse me, that particular zone.
Is this first section built out then? I mean, is it 100% out, built out, or is it?
I don't think it is either.
About 70% and so you're talking about another year or so on, this other section maybe being built out or two.
Mm-hmm.
So that gives you time for your tank to be put in.
It does.
So we're looking all right there then.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got a question for Doug, I guess. So they've got a new tank coming at some point in time, going to help the pressure situation out there. Is there any infrastructure being put in for future fire hydrants out there? I mean, I remember a few subdivisions in years past would make them put a valve and a stub underground where all they had to do was go out there and scrape it off and mount that hydrant because, you know, when there gets to be pressure, even if the houses are sprinkled, you know, belts and suspenders kind of thing, you're still going to want to, it'd be great to have a fire hydrant. And so I was wondering, I mean, I know a couple of our engineering, both our engineering firms are in the audience and our county engineer is still here. Is there any plans or can we ask somebody to go and put that infrastructure in? You know, it's totally easier to put that valve and all in when they're laying that pipe than go back and cut that pipe and put it in.
That's up to CUD. I mean, that's their call, their engineer's call, really. That's not something we would, we would-
If you guys record that, it would prevent us from having to dig up the road after final pavements been done.
We like the sound of that.
Yeah.
If we knew somebody on CUD's board, we might could take the look at that.
Play it up tomorrow.
I mean, that would be a somewhat minimal-
The wishes of this planning commission.
That would be a somewhat minimal cost to the developers. It wouldn't be free, of course, but it would be a lot easier to do it then than to do it later.
All right, now, I've got a question, all that being said, who would bear the cost of putting in the hydrant on top of the stub at a later date?
Again, I think that falls back to CUD. I mean, that's their decision.
But if that, if that-
Or your community could come together then at that point. Enter that into the discussion tomorrow, Craig, if you would.
Community together and put some in.
But if that infrastructure's there, that's a whole lot of your cost out of the way.
If I'm not mistaken, you guys had made that call before on a subdivision.
We've done that before somewhere. I don't remember where.
It does prevent from having to go back up and dig the street up. In a lot of developments where, like if things have been replatted, so re-subdivided, after things have been designed and taps have been put in, it's actually the developer's responsibility to go back up and dig up the street and kill those old taps and retap the main in order to set new taps if they have been re-subdivided from the approved plan that they submitted to us. So it's just, if that's your wish is to put in stubs for fire hydrants, stubs and valves probably for fire hydrants so that that gets it out of the street and doesn't have to be dug up, we would still require probably, I don't know how that would work as far as the cost, something Craig that we can talk about tomorrow, because in areas where there aren't hydrants, they have to do fire hydrant requests and that is actually a cost that the person or individual or group of individuals usually takes care of if it's an area that doesn't have it when it's developed.
Once the stub is in, what is the cost of a hydrant then?
It depends on, well, typically if it's on an existing main, that price increases as the pipe gets bigger because of the materials required to tap the main. If we put in a stub-
Stub's already there.
Right. So if we put in a stub, like for instance, on a six inch pipe, it's, that typical cost is 4,000. The actual cost of the hydrant, I'd have to get some costs in there if that material is already there and you're not having to do like a tap and sleeve and valve kind of situation.
To put one in front of my house on a six inch line would be $4,000.
Would. And that price goes up.
If we've already got the stub in there, then it would be something less than that.
It should for just the fire hydrant itself. If the developer fronts the cost for putting in the pipe and the tee and the valve already.
With CUD, you had to throttle back and make red top hydrants on all these hydrants. It was a volunteer fire department med house. I mean, it just, we just, we've got to do something to get more pressure out there and some of these red tops will be changed after we get the new fire protection out there.
Yeah, the volume is the issue out there. We've got a lot of small, the volume and the loss and so we've got actually quite a bit of pressure out there. We've got over 100 pounds in a lot of that area, but we have such small pipe, all, it's a pretty large area as far as its spans and the elevation is pretty differing out there and we've got a lot of six and eight inch pipe. So we have a tank off a 231-ish area to the east of that and we're actually going to be looking at putting a tank on the west part of that zone so that we have tanks on both sides and we've got enough volume in the middle, if that makes sense. So it should help the situation out there with the volume and the fire protection. You think else?
It's good. Great discussion. I'm glad the planning commission wants to put it on.
Other questions? Comments?
Most approved, subject to all staff comments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Submitted for final plat approval. Item eight A, Curtis M. Williamson, minor final plat. The item number is fourteen dash two zero three six. One lot on 1.66 acres, zoned residential medium density, located at the intersection of Manchester Pike and East Gum Road. Tenmo Properties LLC is the applicant. Includes a waiver request for an off-site soil.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located at the intersection of Manchester Pike and East Gum Road. It's a little bit of an unusual situation how this came about. The previous owners actually sold the property around this lot here. Being over five acres, it didn't need to kind of have a subdivision plat, but when they, the remaining property being on 1.66 acres should have been platted. My conversations with the surveyor indicated that he had drawn up the paperwork for the legal description and that the owner of the property had just recorded it before he'd even realized what had happened. So essentially what he's doing is bringing this plat in now to legally create this 1.66 acres. The original submittal that he had showed the soils over here, it didn't leave him a whole lot of building area, so what he ended up doing was getting a soil site actually on adjacent property. So what he's asking for as far as the plat approval as part of that is again, another off-site soil easement. We don't see these just terribly often, but for whatever reason, we've seen a few in this agenda today. But the rest of the plat, there's, is in pretty good order, just a couple of minor comments that still need to be addressed. The remaining acreage of the property surrounding it needs to be listed and also when they submitted the revision, the year that he had for the signature lines was incorrect. So other than that, I guess those are very minor comments, easily addressed, but the big reason you're seeing this today is because of this off-site soils waiver. If it hadn't have been for that, the soils would have been on site, you wouldn't even be looking at this, just for the waiver request.
So is it both primary and secondary, your off-site?
I believe so, yes, ma'am, because they're not showing any other soil sites on here and this is vacant land.
So the soil easement that we're looking at, is that just one or is that, because we need to have two, right?
Well, I think there's enough soils there for both, I mean, primary and secondary.
What's the zoning on this 1.66 acres?
I believe this is all RL, RM, excuse me, RM.
Okay.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve, staff comments?
Second.
And second. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight B, Finelli Property, Lot One. Item number is fourteen dash two zero six three. One lot on 5.11 acres, zoned residential medium density, located at 3792 Drake Lane. William and Don Finelli are the applicants. Includes a waiver request for fire hydrant distance, number of lots off of a private easement, and size of an existing private easement. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along an existing private easement off of Drake Lane. Planning commissioners may recall, earlier this year, we considered something similar a little further to the north of the property in this area, but the requests themselves are fairly similar. It appears this property was originally deeded, it's over five acres, but it was just created by deed. It wasn't created by subdivision plat. Being that this is off a private easement, of course, we do require those to be platted and there are several located off of this particular easement. When they came, we found out with this issue when it came up because when the property owners came to pull a building permit, that's when we discovered what was going on. So we've been helping them through this process to this point and this plat is a result of that. It does appear that, as you stated, that the, that there's not a fire hydrant within 1,000 feet of this lot nor whether there will ever be just because of its location. Also, the number of lots off the easement, there are several, as you recall, this easement kind of starts back here and kind of goes up here, one comes around here. There are several lot. This has been tracked off over time, several, several years, long even before I'd even gotten here. And the other waiver they're asking for is the fact that this existing easement is just 25 feet, it's not a 50-foot access easement, which is required by our regulations. Under today's regulations, you wouldn't see something like this happen unless it were a planned development, however, this is pre-existing. These comments that I listed here on that last part of the staff comments are really similar to what we considered earlier in the year. At this point, I really don't see the benefit of trying to make them go back and do a planned development. You know, this is an acreage tract, they're just wanting to build their house there. Nothing else really is going on besides that. This is really similar to what we considered earlier in the year, so besides that, the plat appears to be in good order. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I'm very familiar with this whole farm. This is Mr. Tom Drake's old farm. A lot of people, old timers around here will remember Mr. Drake, the watermelon man, around the square and all. They're all family back there. It was a 200 some acre farm with little to no frontage at all. And this is one of Mr. Drake's granddaughters, she's wanting to build a house behind her mother's house. Her mother's, this year's go by, is going to need a little help and all, so they're all family back there. It is a bit of an odd situation, but it's working well so far. The other two were her cousins, some more of the grandchildren, a few months ago, so with that, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion to approve and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight C, George Falk Property, minor plat, I'm sorry, minor final plat. The item number is fourteen dash two zero six four. Three lots on 30-plus acres, zoned residential low density, located off Shelbyville Pike. Chris Hillis is the applicant. Includes a waiver request for fire hydrant distance, number of lots off of a private easement, and size of an existing private easement. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property being located on the east side of Shelbyville Pike, there's an existing 40-foot easement that you can see here, which does access the property back in this area. There are a total of three lots and several structures. You can see his houses here, there's some accessory structures around here as well. The applicant's proposing to rezone this particular lot to light industrial. He wants to run a little portable sawmill business. Now, you have not seen that yet, that'll be coming to the planning commission at next month's night meeting, but he has made application for that. In order to separate the tract, he doesn't want to rezone any of the other area around here, really just this particular tract right here. To do that, he has submitted this plat to basically separate these lots and what's existing here on this easement from what he's wanting to rezone again, which is this tract right here. Those lots, which actually I like, is the fact that these lots right back here will be arranged in such a way that you'll have an existing house on one lot. Right now, you've got two on an existing lot, so this tract will have its own house and this tract will have its own house. The issue that he's running into, there's a couple. One of them being just again, the size of the easement, the fact that by adding this additional lot, he's going over the allotted number that he's allowed to have off the private easement and there is an existing fire hydrant here, however, that doesn't get as far back as this to be 1,000 feet. I forget the exact measurement, but it's not within 1,000 feet. So he's asking for relief from that, from the subdivision regulations. Besides that, the rest of the plat, they've done the comments that we've asked them to do. It appears to be in good order. So Mr. Hillis is present and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Like Will, I know this family, and this is a cleaning up of a situation right here. It's all family. Chris is not family. He's buying that piece of property. We'll be coming in for sawmill next, at our next meeting. And there's been, the Smart and Ready Mix, if you remember, we approved, is just right to the.
Actually, it's right near.
There's been a sawmill there on my lot. But I can't be grandfathered in because it's divided up in tracks right here like it is. But this is just cleanup right here.
Make a motion?
I do so make a motion?
Second.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments?
Yes.
Other discussion, please? Ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? That motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight D. Cole Saturday Farm. Lot eleven. The item number is fourteen dash two zero six five. One lot on one point one two acres. Zoned residential low density. Located along Threet Road. Bob and Shirley Masteller are the applicants. Includes a waiver to the fire hydrant requirements. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located on the east side of Threet Road. The applicants are proposing to subdivide the tract that you see here on the screen from the parent tract. The current layout, when it was originally submitted, actually showed this remainder, remainder of the property, which has basically become the flag lot. You see it kind of dips right here. They kind of had it going straight across, but they didn't have the minimum fifty foot of frontage. That was a concern that we had. That wasn't really something that you could have approved here. That would have been, that would have to have been a variance request from the Board of Zoning Appeals. But they've made the change here, and this cleans it up quite a bit. The, really the only issue outstanding with this plat, again, this is another one of those plats that outside of this waiver request would not have come before the Planning Commission. The closest fire hydrant's a little over twelve hundred feet to the north, as you can see. Let me zoom in just a little bit here. You can see a little bit better. It's about twelve hundred feet. Okay, I'm sorry, I was using the wrong one. But it's about twelve hundred feet here to the nearest fire hydrant to the north. The applicant has discussed this situation with C U D, and there is not the ability to place another hydrant down in this area. So with that, they're asking for the fire hydrant waiver request. Again, besides this issue, the plat does appear to be in pretty good order. There is one minor comment on there. It looked like the flood information that he had there. Maybe the effective date may have been incorrect. But again, that's something that can be fixed pretty easily. So the applicants are present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions, comments?
So with this hydrant waiver, are they offering to do the sprinkler? Would it trigger that or no?
This, it would not trigger that, because this is only one lot. Anything, anything above two lots, basically three lots or more would trigger that, but not this.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Make a motion to approve? Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight E. Colonial Estates. Section twelve. Phase one I and three A. The item number is fourteen dash two zero six six. Ten lots on three point seven eight acres. Zoned residential medium density. Located along Dream Accord to the east of Shelbyville Pike. Tenmo Properties LLC is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is another extension of the Colonial Estates subdivision. It's a final plat, it's consistent with the preliminary that was originally approved. Really, we didn't have a whole lot of comments on this particular subdivision plat. A couple of the comments we did have have been addressed. We asked them to put a temporary turnaround here at the end of Dream Accord. They have done that. They have also better clarified which lots are in which phase. They've identified it on each lot. Those are really the biggest comments we had on that. So the plat appears to be in good order.
Motion to approve?
Have a motion to approve? Need a second?
Second.
Second. Now discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? That motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight F has been withdrawn. Item number submitted for site plan approval. Item nine A. Heat Craft Incorporated. The item number is fourteen dash three zero two two. New construction of twenty thousand square feet warehouse manufacturing facility on thirteen point six acres. Zoned light industrial. Located at three fifteen Murfreesboro Street. Robert Stroop is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Murfreesboro Street. It's the intersection of Murfreesboro Street and John Brack Highway. The applicant's proposing to construct a twenty thousand square foot warehouse facility on the property for a Feed America First. We have asked, we had a number of comments on this. One of the, I'm going to turn it over to Eric here in just a second. One of the comments that I had, had to do with beefing up the landscape plan. They have made some modifications to that. There's, it still needs some work. So they're going to have to come back and we're going to have to sit down and let us talk about what exactly they're proposing. I think they're, they're proposing a larger buffer than they were originally, but I do think that there needs to be more discussion. This, this doesn't, still doesn't have enough detail for the requirements of the ordinance. But I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Hill now for him to discuss some of the other issues that we've had on the drainage side of things.
This, this site is kind of unique. This is an interesting one to finish my tenure on. This site, as you can see right here, this is a sinkhole. The bottom elevation of that, they're showing to be about a six forty point four. And just to give you an idea, this counter here is about a six fifty. So we're talking ten feet deep. It's a pretty good sized sinkhole. You can't really see north of the private, this direction of the plat here. But the, this sinkhole, it takes water. And the design is on this thing taking water. But my dead cow theory, if a dead cow gets in the bottom of that thing and clogs it up, what's going to happen, first thing we look at? And it will overtop this way. So the design of the, the site is, they've done a good job on that. If, if the sinkhole stops taking water, it's going to go this direction. It's going to be okay. The heartburn I have with this, and I've talked with the engineer about this. We're using this sinkhole as a detention pond, and that's okay. That meets our regs and that's, that's fine. We're also using this sinkhole for the septic. Here's the septic tank and here's the septic soils. And the soil scientist has determined this to be adequate soils. And I don't know that we have a reg against that. It just doesn't sit right with me. If we know we're putting water into the ground for our detention pond, and then we turn around and put our, our septic in that same hole, it just, it just doesn't, it just doesn't feel right to me. So I've talked with the applicant engineer about this, and I'm not saying that we have a reg against it. We don't. There's, there's nothing in our regs that really says, that I know of, that says you can't do that. Now, the state is the one that, that eventually signs off on that. But I always feel like my job's to let you guys know when something doesn't just feel right with me, and this is one of them. So my ten and a half years, I think this is the first time I've ever seen this. So, but, but I did want to let you guys know that's, that's a little, it's just a little envious to me. And I don't know what the environmental impacts of that could be. Now, this is also, we're probably talking about a bathroom or two. I mean, you know, this isn't, this is going to be an industrial type, you know, process facility. So I don't, I don't think we're, we're not talking about a apartment complex or something like that. They'd have a lot of waste, but, but it, but it is a little unique. So I wanted to just make you guys aware of that. And the applicant may have more input on, on that.
How big is that area, the sinkhole area? Is that half an acre? Is it five acres? I mean?
You know, I don't know. This one is just thirty, thirty feet. So, and Mr. Huddleston may be able to.
Sometimes the sinkhole is a hole in the ground. Sometimes it's, it's just major depression. And there's a lot of difference. Something's a depression, it's got some good dirt over here. And it's, and something is just a crevice right straight in between some rocks or whatever.
Yeah, I think it's more gradual than a crevice. I mean, it's, it's pretty steep, but I think it's, it's probably, if you went out there, it's just like a big.
These commercial types, it takes a minimal amount of soil anyway, because there's not anything that's producing besides probably a bathroom or something like that.
Right, right.
Sinkholes work good though. Look at Bill.
Sometimes. Got a lot of them.
Good morning, Planning Commission. Chairman Phillips, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Bill Huddleston, President of Huddleston Steel Engineering in Murfreesboro. I did talk to Eric about this last week. So I went back and talked to the soil scientist, and he said that, talked to him this morning. He said we'll be in good shape because we're at least twenty five feet from the throat. Ms. P sent us some state regulations, and that's one of the main ones on locating these soil sites near the sinkhole. We do have to apply to TDEC for a, for a class well injection well perm, class five injection well permit. So they will be looking at this very closely. If there is, if they do deem that there is a problem, soil scientists said we could test a little more to the south for the soil site. Or I could adjust the pond a little on the north side, or I could even dig another pond. We have plenty of acreage out there for this project. So it's okay regulation wise, as far as we can tell. We will be submitting for a state permit. If they do have a problem, there's some adjustments that we can make to satisfy whatever problem they have.
Bill, on this plat, there's a bolded dash line near the bottom of the sinkhole that says it's the twenty five water quality buffer. Is that the twenty five feet you just were talking about?
Correct, yes.
So even though the soils area shaded into that, it should filter before it gets.
We have to be twenty five feet from the throat, and the throat's even closer than, than that, where that buffer is. Closer to the center of those circles.
Doug, you and Eric, between the two of you, mentioned several things that'd be worked out. Is it, are we far enough along that you feel comfortable us passing this, subject to?
I think so.
You're getting, you signing off on it? And that, without having to bring them back next month? And if they wait till after tomorrow, then we're bad Eric either, because he won't be here.
We still worry about his heartburn.
No, as far as the landscape, I think that's something that we can do, you know, before they get the bill. I don't think I need to come back before, you know.
Is it the length or the thickness of it?
Well, a little of everything. Plus, I didn't see many calculations there as far as where the material came from or anything.
I feel better with them, them getting a class five injection well permit. There's TDEC, you know, having, having TDEC's blessing on it makes, makes me feel a little bit, it helps my heartburn a little bit. Thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to them meeting staff's, satisfying staff's concerns.
Have a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number nine B has been withdrawn. Staff reports, before we get into those. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, October thirteenth, six P M. Second room in the, of the historic courthouse, the commission chamber.
Great. For other staff reports, really just have one, just kind of a follow up to some discussion we've had. A month or so ago, you'll recall, we had a presentation by Steve Talknell from Talknell Planning Services, as well as Mike Madison from the Williamson County Planning Department regarding the possibility of traffic sheds for Rutherford County. Ms. P, I know you weren't present for that. Essentially, just to make a, a long story short, essentially what they were proposing, what Williamson County does as part of their development process is they take the condition of roads, and that plays into the lot yield that you can get on larger tracks, depending on the condition of the road. If it has a lot of excess capacities in good condition, you can get more lots than if it's not a very good street, essentially. It's more in depth than that, but that's a good, just a real quick overview. Last month, the Planning Commission just asked maybe some additional information about, you know, possibly moving forward with that process. I contacted, first I contacted Mayor Burgess to make sure he was okay with me reaching out to Mr. Talknell just to get an idea really with what we'd be looking at for time and costs for this kind of project. Mr. Talknell, and I explained it to him on the front end. If we do decide to go this route, obviously, we have to do a request for proposals. We just can't say, yeah, we're going to contract with you. There has to be an open process to that, which we would do. He understands that. Basically, what he said was, he thinks that he could probably get the whole project done in about a year for about eighty thousand dollars. I've informed Mayor Burgess about this as well. If that's something you would like us to pursue, if you'd like to have some more conversations about it, we'd be happy to do that. If you'd like to start kind of moving in that direction where we take proposals for that. Again, I'm really kind of at your, it's at your discretion as if he wants to move forward with this. Obviously, we have not put any money in this year's budget for that, but that's something you would like to move forward with. Those are certainly some conversations we can start having. And of course, working with Mayor Burgess through the budgeting process and everything. We could start moving that ball forward. Of course, just starting the process as far as getting a proposal together, there's really no cost in that. That's really all staff time. But I just want to, wanted to let you know that, that we did reach out to them, and I know somebody who had asked about that. So I just wanted to update you on that. So I'll be happy to answer any other questions about that or take any direction that you may have for that.
I would caution us to move slowly, not within the next thirty days. When we had major changes to subdivision regs and our comprehensive plan, we, we had months and months and months of community input and discussion before we moved forward with this. I think we also ought to need some community input and announce some type of, of a community type meeting. We could do it in conjunction with one of our, our Planning Commission meetings to inform the community of what we're looking at and get input from them before we do it. Worst thing that could happen is that we move forward with this, and then after we get well into it and spend a lot of money, community input is negative. So we need to, we need to, I think, move a little bit more slowly on this. Announce some type of meeting for the community to let them know what's going on in conjunction with one of, one of these meetings over the next few weeks, couple of months. And, and then after that input, make a decision whether to go forward. Does that make a lot of sense to you guys?
Very much.
Yeah, because we're almost a year out from putting together next year's budget, I think it's really smart for us to start now with that citizen input. So I'd really like to see us maybe put that on the November evening meeting, because I think when they came, it was just a work session for us. It was not, no one was on television. Nobody had a chance to see it. So if they could come, not only would we get to hear it again, but citizens would get to hear it as well. And then we would have time to decide whether or not we wanted to advance it before we got in deep into the budget process for next year. So.
And you'd be talking about a presentation similar to the one we, we saw earlier.
You know, let us hear it again. Let us digest. Because I was impressed that there was another way to do it.
With the professionals there and everything? I think so too.
It ought to definitely be at night, so more people can attend. And probably ought to publicize a public hearing after and let the people in the audience voice their concerns. And it may be a little preliminary, but it beats nothing. If they're there, let them, we can always suspend the rule, but if we announce, advertise a public hearing, they could come more prepared to speak.
We'll start moving in that direction. Sounds good. Is that okay with you guys?
Yes.
Finally, sir. Okay. Other than, that was really the only comment I had. As far as staff reports go, of course, just, I know I've told him a hundred times over the last few weeks, but I don't think I could tell him enough that just so much appreciate what he's done for Rutherford County and not just working with him, but just the friendship that we've developed, especially over, not that we weren't friends to begin with. But, you know, working a lot more closely together, you know, as, you know, engineer and planning director. So I do appreciate that and know we'll, we'll definitely miss him.
Yeah, I have to give public accolades to Eric too. When I first started on the commission, we used to have the opportunity to go out and take tours of the different sites. And he was always so patient with me and answering my questions. And one of the things that I admire most about you, Eric, is just your ability to problem solve and to not see things through one lens, through the, you know, you're on, by the book, on the paper engineer lens. You, you have a really good way of sort of looking up three sixty and kind of seeing what's going on. And I hope we can find that again, another engineer. Good luck.
Welcome, Charlotte.
Thank you.
Eric, you're going to be missed, as we already said several times, and you're going to be hard to replace. But life goes on. Alabama's gain is our loss, but we will endeavor to persevere and, and we'll move forward. Once again, good luck to you and your family. Just to kind of follow up on, on our road plan statement. Somewhere around November tenth is our, our evening meeting. So if that's enough time, Doug, okay? If it's not, that's also okay.
I'll reach out to the, to Mr. Madison and Mr. Talknell to see if, you know, just kind of what their calendars look like. And I'll let you know what's, what I find out. Like you said, if we need to reschedule that, maybe to December, even after the first of the year, we'll just see what their schedules look like.
Okay.
Hopefully, they'll be able to work something out.
Once again, our next scheduled meeting is October the thirteenth, six P M. Any other business?
That's Columbus Day. That's not a holiday for the county.
No.
I'm assuming.
We don't have that off.
I just want to say good luck to Eric. It's not every day you find somebody with an engineering degree that talks about dead cows plugging up sinkholes. You gotta get a balance of education and street smarts, you know, do that job right. And I don't think they taught you the dead cow part at school. But that's a very good scenario, and I like those kinds of scenarios. So maybe we can find somebody else that's got a combination of common sense and book smarts all at once, because not everybody has both.
Not only, we're losing a great guy for the county. We're losing a great family here and his wife. I came to know her in the banking business, and you're just, the county's just losing a great family. We're going to miss you.
Anything else? Thank you. We're adjourned.